We have a quorum, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. I have a motion in a second, any further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Bridge. Doing some maintenance stuff, fixing somebody who's gonna move some salt and sand around when we get the shops filled back up. I'm not positive if the rental motor greeters here yet or not, should be this week. The only thing I've got is, other than the DOT Title VI stuff, I'll be gone next Monday, I'll be coming back from a trip, so. The Title VI stuff, that's stuff that we update or try to update every year at the change of the board chair. I wish that the DOT and those people would do something different, but they need to have an actual name, who's contact for the board. So each year we're gonna try to stay on top of it, but we did have our, I think in November, we had our a review or compliance review from the DOT, and there's some things we've gotta do, we've gotta post some things on the website to make sure that people know if there's a discrimination allegation, who they contact, so that, and basically it's contact me and then I tell the DOT and they take it from there, any investigations and. And I'm not sure that this covers the ADA thing yet, I've gotta go back through the notes that I reviewed with with the person that came to find out how we do the ADA compliance and do, I always thought Title VI and ADA weren't the same, so. I'll do some more digging around, but these documents, if we can get these approved or signed off on and accepted, then I can get that stuff sent to Des Moines or Dames and have it put back through, then we'll have it posted on our website, so. The one document is the agreement with the DOT, and a lot of it has to do, you know, we talk about whether or not it's. So, secondary roads, it's a lot, you know, we probably get. In the county probably, I don't know if other departments get federal funds, I'm sure some do. But it doesn't always apply just to secondary roads, it applies to other departments that are using federal funding, and it really boils down to any tax money too, so the one, one document is the, the agreement with the DOT and that kind of more covers transportation side of Title VI for my department and things like that, so. And there's, this whole thing has. You know, documents and locations of what we're supposed to follow, I think for the most part, we do that stuff because we're government in it anyway. But on page six is where you just will need to sign that document, I'll sign page seven. And then we'll send that to the DOT for their signatures, and that's the agreement saying we're gonna abide by Title VI. And then the other one is just assurances and that just lists. Because we're a population under, I can't remember, there's a population limit, we don't have to have a plan, we just have to have assurances, so. I don't know, it's just things that we're gonna put, we're saying that we're gonna do this, and then there's certain terminology we put in any contract that we go out if we do local, well. We'll put it in every document anyway, whether it's a local letter or not, because it uses public funds, so. It's an assurance saying this is what we plan on doing, and then it's, it's more of a. It's more of a let's do it, because we have to do it, send it off and we'll follow what we're supposed to follow, to make sure that any federal funds that we get the county is up to date on that, because they won't, they won't allow federal funds on something that doesn't have this documentation, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the signing of the DOT Title VI Assurance Agreement.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Every year.
I tried to market.
Yep, you did, very good.
I don't think Jackie was saying anything, so I'll just grab these and I'll take them.
Anything else you guys got? I totally talked last, oh, maybe it was last summer, about a lot of crossings over eastern, the railroad crossings. Or up to Grafton, C and CN rail lines, all those crossings on like four hundred street. Up to Ford Thirtieth are just horrible. Are there, have you heard of any plans or anything to? Do those, you haven't heard any on railroad? Cause I just, I had some people calling me, I'm like, well, alls I know we can do is call that number on the side and just report it every time, just report it, there's stuff sticking out. Just keep reporting it, when they get tired of sending their crews out to fix this stuff, maybe they're gonna do it right.
Well, and every time. They're horrible. And when I talk to anybody with the railroad, whenever I get an opportunity to, it's we don't have the money, we're, we're seven years behind, and they, you know. You get the same song and dance, and so, yeah, the only thing they tell us is call that number, that's all they say is call that number, wow. Call the number, I guess, look at the signs, call that number, keep reporting it, so that, maybe, maybe there's a certain amount of calls they get before it shows up as a, as a red flag in their system, and they gotta fix something, but.
That's kinda what I was thinking too, is just continue to keep them. And then a lot of signs, street signs over there are tough to see, I know. There's a program for that, obviously, or whatever, to get all them replaced at some point, but.
Yeah, we're, we're replacing what we, as, as we go, I know that there's a lot of faded signs out there, we're gonna try to catch up on, and. I think with MUTCD right now, I'd have to go back and look to confirm this, but. Right now, the retro reflectivity applies mostly to the to the roadway signs and then the certain, the street signs, but in an emergency, they're hard to see at night, if they're all white, you can't really know what street you're on or anything like that, so, yeah, we're, we're, we should, we. I'm gonna try to find out, I think there's a, there might be some funding available for signs, but. It's a matter of, it's more of a reimbursement program than it is, but you gotta still apply for it and, and see if you can get any of that money, but. There's not very many awards to, if I'm not mistaken, there's not very many awards to that grant, because there's not that much money, so you gotta kind of compete with it every year, but. We'll continue to replace them as we go through, there's a lot of signs out there.
Yeah, I know.
Anything else for him? Drainage, I didn't see any, was there, I didn't see one come through.
It's for reimbursements for the ones from the twenty one. Project that they bid on, is that thirteen?
Yeah.
D thirteen?
And did you see if there's any on forty six or not?
I didn't see any yet.
I'll look to approve the greatest rights, no second.
I have a motion in the second, any further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now we need to set hearing dates.
Yeah, we've been putting it off and need to get them done before we have to start projects. I was gonna get Jacob on the line. I'm guessing we don't have a phone yet.
You're guessing right, it looks.
Is Jacob available?
Okay, thank you. Guess we'll bump it to next week, I didn't hear back from him, so maybe he wasn't gonna be around. Just gotta roll on. I'll put it on next.
Put it on next week. The claims, is there a motion to approve the claims? Got a motion in the second to approve the claims, all those in favor say aye, opposed, motion carries.
Yes.
Take a motion to approve the reports. There's a second. Got a motion in the second and your discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Two of them on the front and one of them on the back. Oh, I guess, no, two. Two of them on the back. And one of them, I forgot, one was a quarterly, they do them different.
I got two signatures.
I'm gonna just sign.
I got a payroll change for Jason Athie going from seventeen twenty seven to eighteen twenty seven, I need a motion. I got another one for Kimberly Brown going from seventeen twenty seven to eighteen twenty seven, is there a motion to approve the payroll changes? Is there a second? I got a motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. You sign these anyplace, just anywhere? Any liquor license? Any more appointments come in, I didn't see.
On the appointments, I didn't get two of them in for the minutes, so I just wanna reflect in the minutes this time, instead of redoing the other minutes that Kathy Meyer was elected to zoning and Merlin Bartz is still our.
NICOG.
Yeah. Economic, something, I think.
I think you're right.
Like that large.
So you guys are just.
Do you need a motion for that?
Did you guys also officially appoint AJ as the Shell Rock Watershed representative and me as the alternate, because they need those minutes.
So you flip flop that, at first I thought it was Jim.
He, he's the actual holding member and I'm the alter, that we need that.
Yeah, you also sent that, want to send that to them.
I'll make sure that's on there too. So that must be a yearly or?
As long as we're getting estate money, it's a yearly thing that we need to reflect in our minutes.
So you don't have a longer term or anything like that, it's just.
It'd be an annual update we do every year, whether we did a, within this, we could do it for longer term, but we still have to annually update, since we're getting our monies.
Do you need a motion to approve those appointments? I got a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye, opposed, motion carries.
My list better next time.
Next we got twenty twenty three ISAC Wellness Agreement.
Like everybody's seen all the info.
Yes, any questions on that?
We have to approve this over years. I will make a motion to approve the wellness agreement.
Oh, second, I got a motion in second to approve the wellness agreement. All those in favor say aye, opposed, motion carries.
Hopefully everybody participates still.
You know, what, three percent, right? You want it right here.
Three percent, we can get five.
Right off the bat, all you gotta do is your assessment in that video and. That gets the ball rolling. It's not that tough.
Now we have an addendum to the Agreement for Law Enforcement and Handling Town.
There will be a few of those coming, and this is the first one.
A change in again, Dan, there's a. Yep, this year and next year, and then we definitely do them after that.
Gosh, it's like that was planned or something.
Your second? I got a motion in the second for the Agreement for Law Enforcement and Handling Town, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed, motion carries. I guess she's not on till nine. Melissa, you on with one word betco?
Morning, whoops, just meeting today at eleven thirty.
Okay, we'll see you then.
All right, sounds good.
Chris, where's Paul? Department have discussions.
Any other department heads? Later this month. I think we extended the meeting, so it should have. We, we adjusted that.
Anybody else in finance? I guess we'll have supervisor weeklys, I have nothing.
I just had Shell Rock Watershed, we had a quarter reading at our. Special about any years, do you want our comprehensive plan? Advertising that, Sam, I get some stuff on. And then, which is lucky, obviously. Fast moving watershed project. I will do a legislation. Some more funded, funding sources for watershed, that's why the special to twelve years too. Otherwise, that's all I have. Is it nine?
Weather. I don't know how much budget I'm gonna have.
Put it over here. Just to, um, might as well look at it and then start digging.
And the other thing that we really gotta talk about is what we're doing.
Yep, not just ever get them.
Yes. They're willing to do it, they just, they got change. Yeah. Yeah, I don't have any.
It's clients.
You got last week's. Mark needs to sign one.
Oh, no.
We'll do it next week.
Yeah.
I was looking for it first, but didn't see it. I was gonna send it to you, and then I thought I'd ask if there's some place I need to sign to.
Make sure you sign the last.
They're all here. Are they all here?
Are you all here? Come on in.
Yeah, come on in if you're all here.
All right, it's kind of cramping.
Oh, we're just here, like we kind of were here to talk about our budget. Answer any questions you guys might have. We are asking for an increase this year, we asked last year, and I know that that didn't work out, and that happens. But we've all experienced surrogates in the alliance, and I know you guys know how that goes, and gas bills and everything going up. So trying to keep up with the cost of the, and keep up with wages and keep up with running the libraries and making sure we can sell our books in our programs, and we have asked for an increase.
Are most of the cities matching what we mentioned?
We're working on the cities, everybody is working to get their cities up. This year we are asking, in fertile, we're asking for twenty one. Twenty two here, so, I know there's a couple cities that are really behind, and the libraries are pushing it, you know, as much as they can to get those cities up. Fertile can do it, I mean, I would think the other towns, we're not any bigger or, you know, richer than anybody else, so.
No, and I just, we kind of had that discussion last year, is that you'd like to see cities match, or were matched.
And we tell them, I mean, we all tell our cities, the county wants, you need to, you know, you need to move it out so that the county thinks kind of match, so I know that everybody's pushing a budget.
Under other, how come there's such a variance? Right. Everybody's not doing the same amount.
Right, or not bringing in the same amount, yeah, yeah. Yes, exactly, yep, so, mainly we have trust also.
That we take out of, like a couple years ago, we took on to do our cement project. So that's why we have a little bit more, we keep that in case of building repair, we don't ask the city to do that, we do that themselves, so. That's why we're a little higher there.
Yeah, and ours will be high next year because we are in process of a casino grant to get solar panels in fertile, which will help the alliance. So next year, our other is gonna look like forty seven thousand, so it's, I mean, they just, that kind of gets skewed depending on what people are getting grants and fundraising and stuff, so. Fundraising and stuff, so.
Ours does that too.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Not right now. We can try. We'll start next week, so. Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it.
Doing important jobs.
We do our best, and we will.
Get back.
I guess I'll take a motion to adjourn. I got a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye. What did you say?